All right. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tombwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 11, 2023. The meeting is called to order. And I'll start with roll call. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Wait, Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Schumacher, we're expecting... Maybe just running a little late. Vice Chair Sullivan?
Present.
Commissioner Tobias?
Here.
Mr. Verell?
Here.
Commissioner Bunhold?
Here.
Me, your Chair, Mr. Roberts. All righty. Changes to the agenda, the only one that I've got is that we don't have minutes this time around to review, so we'll just skip that. But are there other changes? Some other changes. Let's go to Commissioner Reports, and this is where we... If something has caught your eye, if you've attended something or done something interesting, just let us know what you do. Okay. Brad, Managers' Report?
Well, I've got a couple items. First of all, I'd like to share with everybody, I found out on Monday that our urban forestry management plan had been awarded a sustainability award from the State American Planning Association. So, that's a big deal. This is the first award, well, it's the first award that we actually applied for, and the first award we've been awarded since we've been here. So, that's actually really cool. Second of all, thank you for canceling the meeting on the 28th. That allowed me to catch a flight to Philadelphia. The conference was very good. Focus was on housing and sustainability. There are challenges in that area. Some areas are still losing population. Camden has gone from 77,000 to 71,000 in the past decade, despite the turnaround and probably dealing with crime and other issues. So, they have a different set of problems than we do. However, there were a number of really great speakers, really good people I met when I was there, so there are some things that will come in to inform our discussions on the housing side and also the equity side.
Cool. I'm glad to be able to attend that. That's always a great conference.
I apologize, I was not able to bring cheesesteaks back. Kind of leashed everything.
With or without with, okay. Too bad. Okay. Let's go to general public comments, and we have a number of people here today. Glad to see you all. Did you want to address us just in general, or were you here about our, the housing actions?
No, this was about the East Street extension.
Okay.
And I know it's early, because a lot of you don't know exactly what the project, yeah, what the details are, but we just don't want to wait until you get the funding and we don't have a chance to have our input. So, that's why we're starting early on this.
Okay, that sounds good, and I think you must be Patty Riley.
I'm Patty, yeah. Yeah, and I just got a little thing to read here. I didn't know how much time we were allotted, so...
Two, three minutes each.
Okay. I knew the city council was three, so...
Okay, well, my name is Patricia Riley, and my address is 108 Roberts Road, Southeast Tombwater. I am very concerned about the plans to use a different route to go from Capitol Way to Cleveland Avenue. The original plan we saw was almost a straight shot and just going north at the Fish and Wildlife Warehouse. Now, we see a completely different route. This is the third route. Now, we see a completely different route coming way less than 100 feet from Mayan and several neighbors' backyards. We were fine with the original proposal, because it still left the majority of trees and a buffer for the wildlife, and being close to the Fish and Wildlife would not present a problem that we would have to deal with. They work their shift and go home. We would have to deal with this total disruption to our lives and neighborhood 24/7. I am equally upset about the possibility of pushing all the wildlife out once again for a four-lane road, eliminating all their habitat. We have at least 10 deer that roam the area behind our homes. We have squirrels, raccoons, owls, the countless birds that call this area home, and we even saw a possum this day, and coyote, yeah. So, can you imagine the constant noise we would have to suffer with having a four-lane road right behind us? We can hear their freeway from our homes, so you can imagine how bad it would be having it in our backyard. I continually hear about preserving our environment, but all I see is forests being cut down to make room for a small number of homes most of the time. Larger areas of timber being cut down is heartbreaking for two reasons. The trees being destroyed and the wildlife, once again, being run out of their habitat. Since when did we become so much more important than the wildlife that was here long before we were? So, we're just having, you know, please consider the original route again. And also, as I noticed at the water tower, it was going to go right between the water tower and our house, which is not very far apart, actually. So, we were going to go out and measure, like the four-lane road on Cleveland, to see what it would be. And there's other things, but I didn't want to take too much time, so that, you know, people don't repeat the same thing, so...
Do you want to go ahead and mention anything?
Oh, well, I'll give it to Tom if you want.
Okay. That's right. Great.
Well, I'm Tom Donnitz. So, hey, a little bit of 126 Roberts Road, if you look at the artist rendition, you can't see my house, because they used such an old photograph. We were happy with the original proposed route, which is straight up. And now, I'm being told, and I don't want to name names, I'm being told that you're trying to fast-track this to go this way, because there was some work, some survey that was done on the Coraline Bridge, and so that if you got this through quick, you might have to shut down the Coraline Bridge for repairs. And if that's the case, who knows how high that could be? If the bridge has to be replaced, you know, this could be the permanent route. So, in this case, we were told, this is the cheap route, because you guys, the city owns the property behind us. They bought it years ago, so they had access to the water tank. When I built my house, I said before a planning commission, and they said, "That property will never be developed. We give you our word." And now, we see a road going over there. I'm glad you got the sustainability award. This route you want to do will destroy the most forested part of the hillside. It'll destroy the most, where the animals are. You know, I know none of you have ever been there. It's like a unique time capsule back there. You know, I got employees that worked at the brewery that'll testify to the wildlife was there. And the only reason it is so pristine back there is not because of the City of Tombwater, not because of this brewery people, because of us. We're the ones who repair the fence when they go in there, they steal copper when they go in there to see what they can, what they can, trouble they can cause back. We're the ones chasing them out. You know, there's bad people there, but that's why this area is so beautiful back there. This makes no sense to come this route. We were just down at the Riverside Cafe Restaurant down there. Do you realize how much noise it's going to be coming through that valley? 28,200 cars a day, which is up from the original estimate of 25,000. And when you watch your artist's rendition, it's all done to piano music. I don't think I'm going to hear piano music, do you?
About 100 cars a day.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, if you shut down the Coraline Bridge, we're talking double that, 60,000. You're going to be putting everybody on Capitol, and what they'll want to do is go hit the road, go straight up the hill, and go back onto Cleveland. Nobody's going to want to do the scenic bypass to piano music. You guys don't want to develop Tombwater. People are going to be so pissed off at Tombwater. They want to go and get where they're going. That's what the East Street Extension was promised to us to do, to make it get from point A to point B quicker, not a scenic bypass, and not because it's the cheap route. I don't like being called "the cheap solution," you know? So, my suggestion is, if, even if it costs more, sometimes, you know, when you want to do something, you've got to do it right, even if that means spending extra money, you know?
Which I have a hard time believing you've called.
The other thing, too, is fortunately, I love wildlife, so I've taken a lot of photographs of some of the wildlife back there. So, some of the pictures might be pretty interesting. Anyway, just want to let you know that do their job right. This artist's rendition, it is so insulting to me to watch it. Piano music, are you serious? 28,200 cars to piano music? No. Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't want it in your backyard, and the bottom line is, at the end of the day, the end of the day, you guys will all get to go home to your nice quiet home, your nice quiet neighborhood. The people at the Fish and Wildlife Warehouse, it's not even the Fish and Wildlife Department, it's the warehouse. They don't live in our neighborhood. I'd be surprised how many even live in Tombwater. They're going to go home to their nice quiet home and their nice quiet neighborhood. Let us keep our nice quiet home, our nice quiet neighborhood.
Tombwater.
Yeah.
And the one final thing, you know, it's interesting to me that some of the people,
somebody even from the city said, "Well, we talked to the Fish and Wildlife people. They don't want it next to them." Well, nobody's talked to our neighborhood, the people who live there. Why doesn't anybody come talk to us about it? So, anyway, yeah, like I say, this, this is only the tip of the iceberg. We're going to get the whole neighborhood, the valley, everybody. They need to...
Yeah, we just need more details on what the actual plan is.
But, but that's the thing, when I'm hearing, when I'm hearing that, "Oh, no, this might not be the plan," well, why do you have it on your website? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just here supporting my sister. I go to the house all the time, and I enjoy sitting there watching the deer.
That was good to hear, Riley.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, I appreciate you all three taking the time to speak before us.
Thanks for having us.
You're welcome to stay with the rest of your house.
Oh, sure.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, one more thing. Yeah. If I were to email you, you know, privately, because there's one aspect of this that none of you know about, that, you know, because like I say, you guys don't live out there. You don't see what's going on. This, if you go this route by the water tank, you're going to open it up to a huge environmental disaster. I guarantee it. And I have statistics, I have facts, and most, and to back up what I'm saying, this would not be the wisest route to go. The wisest route to go would be straight up, and I can, I can give you my information if you want, you know?
And I, from the staff perspective, I reached out to our transportation manager to find out more details. I didn't hear back before the meeting, but I promise that I'll get back to both the planning commission and to you, depending on what I hear back. I also encourage you, if you haven't already, to also provide your comments directly to the city council.
I'm sorry?
I also encourage you to provide your comments directly to the city council. Planning commission, I think I won't necessarily speak entirely for their role, but their role is really to sort of set the broader planning parameters, and we pretty much have done that already. But the city council ultimately will be approving the contracts and everything else for the actual construction. So, it'd be very important for you to...
Yeah, we found doing that.
Because the problem with this, with what I'm talking about, that, you know, the environment problem that will happen, you know, and the support of being in the planning community, this is, it's not going to happen overnight. We're talking, it's going to be four, five years, four at the most, I think, before it turns into a nightmare for Tombwater. You know, and the problem is, there'll be no going back. Once you do this, it is out of the bottle, so...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you hitting on the record here in the planning... Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elsner.
Okay, what...
Anybody got a Brad Medruck, Go Fish?
Let's see, I'd just like to note that Commissioner Schumacher has joined the meeting, so thank you. And did somebody join? It looks like Mr. Tuanyo from the Jolt News has joined. Mr. Tuanyo, would you like to address the planning commission tonight?
Hello, I don't really have a public comment, I just want to... What is our...
Okay, thank you very much, glad you're here. Bye.
You mentioned the Coraline Bridge, is that the Custer Way Bridge, or...?
Well, the Coraline Bridge, it's the bridge on Capitol that goes over the Shute's River, just south, just south, in between East Street and Custer.
Okay, so it's the North-South Bridge, or the North-South?
Yeah, North-South Bridge.
Okay. I couldn't tell if that was, if you referred to that or referred to the Custer Way Bridge.
Technically, like the Coraline Bridge.
Okay, I hadn't heard the name before. Thank you.
All righty. Let's move on to item number eight, which is our discussion on the affordable housing action. And Brad, just before you jump in, I just wanted to note in general that if there's some actions that are either underway or are content studies, you could just make sure we're aware of what the funding amount to implement is and where that's coming from, whether it's, or if it's straight.
I'll think, remind me at the end of the presentation, and I'll touch on some of the things that I, we're working on right now. In terms of funding costs and so forth, I'm probably minimal to none at the moment, because we haven't committed to, say, a purchase of a property or anything like that, that I'm currently aware of. So, in response to a request from the planning commission last month, basically, especially with the number of new members that we've had in the past couple of years, it was requested from staff that we provide an update of what we've done to date in terms of housing to bring everybody, number one, to bring everybody up to speed, and where we are, what we have done, and also sort of set the table for the discussion of the housing element update for the comprehensive planning process that we're going to be beginning here shortly. And so, we're going to take this back five years to 2018, and talk about, try to summarize everything that we've done to date, and a lot of the things that the planning commission has been involved in. And where we anticipate we'll be going next with a lot of this stuff. As I mentioned again, these actions will be used to inform what we're doing for the comprehensive plan update, especially the fact that the comprehensive plan update requires us now to show how we're going to be providing affordable housing to all segments, economic segments in the community, which is a new requirement, and it's one that we're all trying to figure out how we're going to do that. We could probably show numbers, how it will work, but more importantly, want to demonstrate that we can show actions that are implemented. So, the issues that you're probably already familiar with, there's definitely not enough housing currently in the city to meet current demand, and this is number one economic issue. If you don't have your, you know, the supply equaling demand, the prices are going to go up, because you have a rare commodity. Coupled with that is wages in the community are not rising as quickly as the housing costs are. So, we've got a twofold issue. We're not, don't have submission supply, and two, what is out there isn't necessarily affordable to a wider and larger group in the community. And this is affecting more and more people. We've gone from having, struggling to meet these, just the, you know, for those people who can only afford 50 or 80% of, based on their income, over 100 is now becoming more of a challenge. It's important to understand that as part of all these discussions, that the private market is really going to be the driver and provider for almost all the housing in the city, either through being able to do so at a straight market rate, or through incentives or some other means to make it worth their while to build. There will be a role for some public funding for permanently affordable housing, but that is a very small fraction of the total out there. So, we need to be creative about how we're approaching this to try to really make it easier for the private market to build. The issue again with that is, and what you'll notice as we go through these particular items, is that they are sort of scattershot. We're all over the map in terms of what we are proposing to do and what we have done. That's intentional. There isn't one solution to this. When we started these discussions, it was clear that we'd have to do many different things and hope some of them worked, and tweak as we needed to go, change, and, you know, and as we needed to go forward, and that's definitely what we're still doing as we, as we talk about this. So, this is a summary of all the actions. We'll just type in sort of highlights. If you want more detail, you can consult the staff report, which provides more of the background and history of these particular items. I also want to call your attention to Appendix B in the staff report, which is a, the actual timeline of the actions taken since 2018, so you can see how they all sort of flow together. These will sort of jump around a little bit, they're not in chronological order, but they're sort of in the general order that made sense to me as I put this together. We'll start first with what really sort of kicked off the city's interest in all this, which is the Resolution R 218-016 from the city council that established the reasons why we're actually doing a lot of this work. We'll talk a little bit about the Regional Housing Council, what they do. We'll talk a little bit about Woshkow's Right Away Initiative process, which is affecting Tombwater, even though the projects themselves are in the City of Olympia. We'll talk about the Tombwater Housing Action Plan, which is our, our plan for dealing with housing now. So, all of the things that we've done to date and our new actions are contained in that plan. We'll talk a little bit about multi-family tax exemption program. We'll talk about some of the housing text amendments the planning commission worked on and recommended to the council, as well as housing fee amendments, and we'll also touch on some recent changes the city council made to the rental housing code for the city. So, 2000, in 2018, the city council recognized that there were clear issues on the range of housing and housing availability in the city. And this is important, because it starts first with the first real council action and recognition that, number one, there needed to be some action taken by the city to deal with homelessness. It was a clear problem. It was something that would require some involvement, some action taken by the local government. This is kind of, this is different from what had been done before. This was the council recognizing they needed to do things, and we needed to be clear about what we're doing to the community. The next part of that was, it was the recognition, in order to deal with homelessness, you need to also make sure that there is a sufficient supply of housing, both affordable and total number of houses in the city, to keep people, number one, housed and out of homelessness in the first place, but also provide a place for people who are homeless to go to. So, that was number two, part of this. The third part of this was recognition that the city alone didn't have the resources to deal with this. We had to really work with regional partners to accomplish this. And so, that ordinance, excuse me, that resolution, which I included a number of the actions in the, in the staff report, if you want to go through them, we, the staff worked really hard on sort of figuring out what we needed to do based on that resolution, the actions that were identified. In 2018 and 19, we worked with the planning commission and the city council to develop affordable housing plans, which is essentially, all right, we've got these goals, what are we going to do? And what are the actions we need to take to, to make those things happen? The good news is, with the exception of maybe one, two of very small items on those lists, we have accomplished that initial list. We've gone through the list, we've done what we said we needed to do. Has it made a difference? Oh, yes. Has it solved everything? No. Which means we're, you know, on to Plan B. Let's just, let's see what else we can do to help you. Stepping away from the city's actions directly, talking a little bit about what's happening on a regional level. In 2020, there was a concerted effort by the three largest cities, Tombwater, Lacey, and Olympia, to work closely with the county on a new way of addressing allocation of funds for two things. One, directly for homelessness services, that's anything from intake to support services and everything related to homelessness, as well as coordinating regional funding for permanently affordable housing. That means that housing that for people whose incomes are typically 50% of AMI or less, could reasonably afford to live in those units. Primary purpose of the, the group was to leverage resources and partnerships through policies, and so went to promote equitable access to safe and affordable housing. Tombwater, in terms of our sales tax and our property tax, is probably about half Lacey, and Lacey is probably 2/3 of what Olympia has, in terms of resources. We also, the county serves as a conduit for a lot of state funds, and in some cases, federal funds that are coming through the state related to housing. So, if we want to do things on a regional level, or if we have goals that want to address the issues for the residents of the Tombwater, we need to be able to work with the others to do this, because we don't have enough resources ourselves to do this. When we're talking about affordable housing, you know, for permanently affordable housing, it's important to understand there are two really big components. Number one is the cost of construction. Be from purchase of land to permit reviews, connection fees across the building, and opening the doors. The second and equally important part of that is the ongoing staffing to support the residents in those, in those buildings, and that's an annual expense. And that's necessary to ensure that all the accounts that we intend, you know, we get people into housing, they have opportunities, they can, and they have enough support behind them to turn their lives around, or to do things to be able to come back out of that system at some point, they have the supports there. If we don't have that, we lose everything that we've been trying to accomplish. So, the Regional Housing Council is, number one, it implements the county's five-year homelessness crisis response plan. It sets priorities, it establishes projects to fund. Every year, there is a RFP process, the Request for Proposal process, for projects coming through for construction, on one hand, and then there's also a similar RFP happening at the same time that addresses service provision. So, say for, think about hazardous weather conditions, either extreme heat or extreme cold. There's, there's funding that is provided to organizations to support standing up those areas when needed. There are provisions in there to support the homelessness services that we have in the community. We have three general areas that are covered by different organizations. We have for youth under 18, we have family support services, and we have single adults. So, each of those components has their own funding needs and own support that they need to be part of that. There are different components as part of that funding as well. As part of the regional, the interlocal agreement that was approved, there are two council members assigned to the RHC, and they meet at twice a month to discuss issues, to approve things. Council member Althouser and council member Kathy are the two council members. There's also a commitment of at least a quarter FTE of staff time to this RHC effort. That is a quarter of my time, so if you're wondering what else I do during the day besides write that staff reports and not proofread cover sheets, that's, that's what I do. But, so that's the regional effort, but go ahead.
Um, before we leave the Regional Housing Council topic, and hate to interrupt you here, but I'm wondering, I know you said it's just the three largest cities, but I'm wondering if there was some thought given to the affordability in some of the smaller towns within the county, and partnering there, and whether that's appropriate?
So, let me clarify, the Regional Housing Council, the members of the Regional Housing Council, as of today, are all the jurisdictions within the county, with the exception of Dakota, Tonino, and Rainier. Now, we do, the county staff has been actively coordinating with the staff of those jurisdictions on particular issues, but they haven't formally opted in to the Regional Housing, the council. So, but there's, there's options for them to do so if they choose. But Yelm, the three largest cities up here in the county, are all part of that.
Maybe I'm wrong that some of those towns are a little more affordable, but, you know, why not use every available town?
Correct. And that's actually, that is born out of the recent statistics from Thurston Regional Planning Council. Dakota's by far the most affordable community. It's the smallest. And Rainier is close second, and then Tonino. So, if you're looking for affordability counties, it's in that order, in that area. They will also have to address the safety crimes for what they're going to deal in the future.
I'll also throw in that the affordability equation, I realize this is the housing action plan, but affordability really is, is a combination of the housing stock itself, but also transport to where people need to go, and the jobs at the schools or the, whatever they need to do to live their lives. So, it's, it's a, it's more than just the houses.
Little bit discussion related to that. Number one, the discussions we've been having with the Regional Housing Council and the city, for the most part, have not addressed issues related to wages... for the most part, have not addressed issues related to wages and income supports. We focusing just on the supply of housing. That's the primary concern. The comprehensive plan and what has been developed since the 1980s in this area really sort of goes at the, the goals that you speak of, of being able to build a community that has a, the densities you need to support an active transit for those who don't, you know, have the ability to afford a car and so forth. So, we're, we're trying to get at it from multiple ways, but there are some big things that we're not dealing with on the local level.
Turn around to see if there's other comments. Thanks, thanks for letting me interrupt that.
I just want to touch on a, a current project that is sort of what, and this is sort of an example of what can happen when the governor sees something and wants to do something. And since we're state capital, we, we tend to draw more attention. The Washdott right-of-way process is a, an effort from, directed by the governor directly to Washdott, to the state patrol and to the department of commerce to basically clear out encampments in interchanges in the city of Olympia. Little background on what can and cannot happen in the state of Washington when it comes to dealing with homelessness camps and so forth. We are in the, the Ninth Circuit of federal court and there is a decision called Boise. I don't remember the full details of the decision, but it's 2018. The important takeaway from that is if, if a jurisdiction makes a decision to move people out of city public property, they can't just do that without making sure that there's an adequate provision of housing for those people being moved. So, we can't just send them down the road and tell you good luck. You basically have to demonstrate that we have a bed for that person at some, at the time that we move them. So, that, what that means is for this particular effort, the, the, while some of the, the goals make sense, we don't want people in the right-of-way where it's inherently dangerous. You know, crossing the interchanges and so forth to get to a camp and so forth is not a good idea. There are also other issues in terms of health and other things that are very important to try to deal with as well. We need to be able to provide housing directly for those people identified in those camps in order to change the situation. This process is really focused on identifying how that's going to occur using state funds to provide the housing. There are two projects right now that are in the works that hopefully are going to be completed in the next two or three months that will make a bigger change than what we've seen today in terms of those, the encampments in the Olympia interchanges. There is a project in the city of Olympia where the state has purchased with Lehigh, which is a nonprofit on the Seattle, a hotel in Olympia or, excuse me, in Lacey, just across the, the street from Olympia, that is being converted, cleaned up and being, was going to be used for homeless services and residents. Again, important point, again, it's, it's, there's money that was put towards the purchase, but there's also money that has been put towards the ongoing staffing side of that. From past experience, we know that without the staffing, it's not a good idea, it doesn't work. There's also an encampment called Franz Ferdinand in the city of Olympia, run by the city of Olympia, that is in the process of being stood up. It's south of the Pacific, just not too far from the Pacific interchange. That's one component of that property. The other component is currently in the works, there, the city of Olympia has advertised the RFP to build a permanent facility on a portion of that property as well. So, it, it has been an ongoing coordination with the state and the local jurisdictions since May of last year. We, we meet, we started to meet five times a week, we're down to two times a week now on what we're doing. And we're working through not only the individual jurisdiction issues, but also we've got the providers on, on the meetings. We've got the coordinators that we've really been fortunate, the city of Olympia has a lot of people that have been working with homeless camps and, and that has been an essential part of this process, as well as discovering how exciting it is to deal with the large bureaucracy that the state is. So, I'm not sure, that will be an ongoing process. But stepping back to local issues, this is, the, the Temwata Housing Action Plan is really the next step beyond the first resolution that we discussed in 2018. We really, we were fortunate because the state had allocated funds throughout the state for grants to help jurisdictions stand up individual plans that basically did, on a broader level, what we had already started to do. We are also very fortunate because we've been able to work closely with the cities of Olympia and Lacey on a number of different projects and this is one of them. We were able to pull resources, we were able to put our staffs together and develop a number of things related to this with Thurston Regional Planning Council. You'll hear a lot of that kind of coordination going on. Because it's, it's important for us because, again, our staffing has doubled since Erica has joined us, but we don't have individual housing coordinators and others that, that others do. The plan is important because we were able to do some surveys and analysis and everything else that we really needed to have in place in order to be able to say, this is what the issues are, develop the policies and, and actions to deal with them and then more importantly, set the framework for going back and doing the monitoring, doing the data again, is it working? So, that's, that's really what the kind of the basis and importance of, of this process was. The focus of the plan, again, was just on preserving and creating permanent housing. This is the next level above the permanently affordable, the affordable housing component. And affordable housing is 80% or more of AMI when I'm talking about this. So, it really is, how can we build more units, period? And if we get affordable units, great. But that's, we didn't deal with the homelessness side of the issue. We just dealt with the unit side of it. Equity was a huge component of the process and in terms of how we were looking at the issues and how we framed the actions that are in the plan. As I mentioned, it didn't deal with household income or weight supports. So, that's another outside component that we were sort of, you know, working with the state and trying to figure out how else we could deal with that. But it's not a local thing that we necessarily can deal with. So, the products of what we did, I'm just going to, it's kind of hard to read, so I'll just sort of touch on this briefly. Number one, we completed a regional housing needs assessment. So, that was demographics, income, everything else. Did that in 2020 and 2021. The good thing is that data, more importantly, the structure of creating that data is something that we could reuse when we're doing the housing allocation process for the comp plan updates. So, there is a connection between what GRPC has done before and what we're going to be doing as part of the comp plan. From that assessment, we did a gap analysis. We need, meaning where are we missing some important things? What can we add to make sure that, number one, we have the, the amount of housing, but more importantly, the, the correct types of housing for the population that we're serving? So, we're not looking at just single-family, multi-, you know, single-family houses and three bedrooms or more and garden-style apartments of 100 units or more. There's a range of things that we need to be providing for the range of the income, household size, age of the people, everything else. We also did our landlords, because we really needed to understand the local rental market. Meaning, what are the, the issues that, that, for both landlords and tenants in terms of what affordability looks like? But more importantly, for us especially, single-family housing is a huge part of our rental market in the city of Temwata. If I remember correctly, it's close to 50% of our single-family units are rentals. And we need to understand that market and we need to be able to address issues that come up in that market because it's a huge component of what provides housing for, a large component for our population.
Commissioner, go ahead.
For that piece in particular, has there been any discussion with some of the local HOAs and some of the rental caps that they have? And is there any discussion on adjusting those?
That's actually a good question. I, I think we identified as some of those things as things to do, but we haven't gone much farther than that.
So, no, like for my subdivision, there's, I think, an 80%, let's say, owner occupancy for that subdivision. So, if I wanted to today, I could not rent my, my home as a rental. So, that HOA would then take precedence over that. So, that would restrict the ability to even rent my, my home or anyone else in the future. So, the HOAs would be a key component, I think, of that as well.
That's interesting. Because I, my HOA doesn't do that, but I wouldn't be surprised if some of the newer ones would become.
Most of them do, they'll have some type of rental cap. It's a different percentage based on the HOA agreement. Once you hit that cap, they will not allow rent that property or, without significant friction.
A slight tangent here on that, but similar to what you're voicing with as far as single-family homes, you know, understanding the survey of the rental market itself, I think, would be important. But I think it might also be important to see what the data is for occupancy rates within those homes. So, for example, how many, how many three-bedroom homes do you have that have only one occupant? And then also fitting that into a shared housing services model. I believe Tacoma has a 501(c)(3). I think it's independent, I don't think it's associated with the municipal housing authority. But, you know, they have a housing program. And I believe that, uh, senior services in Olympia had one or may still have a, a program geared more towards seniors, retirees, the folks who, you know, maybe have a, a single-family home with multiple rooms, but, you know, they don't, they, they live alone or only use like one room of a three-bedroom house, for example. A lot of times, folks that are, you know, retired, living on a fixed income, they may be facing, even if they paid their home off, they're facing increases in property taxes because the values of their homes are going up. And without extra income to suffice, to service that higher tax level, they can be at risk of losing their home, even though they've already paid for it, where they, they can't afford to maintain it. So, I, Tacoma, I believe other cities have tried this too, but I think that Tacoma in particular has a program for matching up, you know, folks who have extra room within their homes, be able to offer more affordable rents to people that just need, you know, a single occupancy living situation, which then can allow them to stay in their home for longer and be more independent, while also having a, a housing option for folks who are at the lowest end of the economic ladder, you know, to be able to have a, a stable place to live. I know that doesn't speak to, you know, as far as building permanent affordable housing because obviously the market is going to constantly change with people who will or won't have capacity for that. But I think that could be a useful strategy to bring to at least a regional housing policy to say, okay, are there, are there already existing 501(c)(3) organizations? And senior services, for example, that could match up people who have housing with people who could take in renters as well.
Thank you for bringing that up. Like, the discussion today is primarily on what the city has taken in terms of zoning and land use actions to deal with housing. There are a number of other groups in the community that are currently very active in how to deal with these issues. One of those is the Housing Action Team, which is under Thurston Thrives. They have three different components. The first component deals with homelessness. The second is, as I just forgotten entirely what they do, deals with senior housing. And I know council member Dahlhoff has been exceptionally active in that, that group and, and council member Tobias. That, what you just described is definitely something I know they've been pushing for. For number one, for, as you say, you know, if you've got an older person living in a larger house that doesn't or doesn't want to move or can't move, but at the same time is becoming harder and harder to pay for that, how do you deal with that in terms of not only helping pay for the rent, but also perhaps having help around the house? That was another component of the discussions they had. So, I'm not touching on a lot of the other stuff, but there's, you're correct. There's a huge amount of other things that are happening out there that I'm not necessarily up on as I probably should be, but now that we've doubled the size of our department, Erica is going to be doing all of that.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Maybe for Erica's benefit, okay, because we've discussed this several times before, but lumping all people to rent their homes out into the title land, a landlord is really stretching things. When you've got people that built 50 homes and then rent those houses out and live off the income that's in it. There's a fairly large group of people in, because of the military community in, in our neighborhoods who buy a home and then get transferred somewhere else and they keep that, that home, in many cases with the idea of coming back here to live after they've finished their military service. And that's the kind of people that you want. People that like Olympia, Temwata, Lacey and want to come back to it. And the only reason they are landlords is because they can't afford to have the house empty while they're not there. It's a whole different picture of being that kind of a renter than the landlord magnet who brings in the millions of dollars off of owning 100 homes.
And I'm using shorthand when I talk about renters and landlords as one homogenous group. It's because of the way it's written out in state law that there's that, those are the terms that are used. You are correct, Terry, about the, the large number of military families we have that rent out not only in Temwata, but Lacey and Olympia, especially in Lacey, with the expectation that they're going to be coming back. So, there's a different level of commitment versus just looking at the equity that they can get out of the house and whatever, you know, that immediate thing. And there's also the difference between, in my mind, those people own, say, a small number of homes that live in the community versus outside who own housing but don't have a tie to the community or an easy way to access to the community. So, there's a, there's more there that I probably let out. So, we, we have wanted to say thank you for all this time.
Thank you, thank you for being here again.
We just didn't want to.
So, then don't forget city council.
Just to make sure, so, here's capital, here's co-
I'm just wondering, as part of this, and maybe this is the other services that you were talking about, but as part of this effort, are we looking at wraparound services? Like, mental health, job training? Because the city of Seattle has thrown a lot of money at homelessness and they haven't really seen very good results because they're not, you can build temporary housing, you can build housing, but if you don't get to the root of the problem of why people are willing to live alongside I-5, then you're never going to solve the problem.
Well, and that, that's what I'm, what I've been emphasizing. It's one thing to pay the money to construct the units. It's the other thing to make sure that you have the annual funding for the staffing needed to move people who want to move to the next level or provide enough opportunities for those people to do that. Because that's essential.
Can I ask you a quick question here? A little bit of a I, I, about two weeks ago, I think I got an email from the city talking about a proposed development and maybe it was longer, maybe it was a month ago. And it had a traffic analysis attached to it. And we were talking about how to make things easier and just more streamlined and blah, blah, blah. I went through that traffic analysis and that was the longest single document I've read in a while, I think. It went on for maybe 100 pages, it was very, very detailed. Is that a required document on, at what level does that become a requirement for development, for developers?
Going to attempt to answer, Erica will correct me. I believe we require a traffic analysis for any, any use that generates more than 50 trips during peak hour. So, you know, for example, anytime you build like a drive-through, a Starbucks or a restaurant, guess what? You, you're going to do a traffic study. If you do something on a much smaller level, say a short flat or something else like that, you probably will not be required to do a traffic, full-out traffic study like the one you looked at. There are particular caveats to that. Number one, there are particular interchanges in the city that are failing, meaning that they're not meeting level of service established by the city or Washdott. And I'm speaking of the, the Temwata Boulevard, I-5 interchange is number one issue. If we have trips going to that interchange, we, we basically do a transportation-
A concurrency?
A concurrency, transportation concurrency, short, two-page form that everybody fills out. A concurrency, transportation concurrency, short two-page form that everybody fills out, how many trips are you doing? And we figure out if any going to that, if something goes to that interchange, there may be a portion or a fee assigned to ultimately fixing that interchange because you're adding not only the big ones that are sort of like easy to figure out, it's the multitude of the small ones that may not be paying their full share of the, those improvements, but contribute to the problem.
How long was required, that kind of analysis?
We, that has come out of really the Growth Management Act because number one, uh, the, the Growth Management Act says, not only do you have to be able to, uh, when you build something, whether it's housing or commercial or industrial, you need to consider the impacts not only to the environment, say Critical Areas Ordinance deals with that kind of stuff, but also to your transportation system, your parks, your pools. Uh, and as growth occurs, those impacts should be addressed. It's not a let it all go and then fix it afterwards process. It says, as development occurs, funds come in and you deal with those problems.
Well, I guess I was thinking that, I was assuming that it had been around for a while. It sounds like it has. My thought overall was that, that it seems like a, um, a hindrance to development that potentially could be solved by looking at historical data and, and assessing a fee going forward based upon historical patterns, saying if you're going to build a housing development, it's going to cost you five thousand per lot as an impact fee toward traffic parks, you know, whatever we're going to try to cover. Um, and instead of, instead of them making them do a unique traffic study for their particular thing, just say this is going forward. You know, if you're going to build one out of this and apartments this and sort of work going on. But like, and the traffic study had to have taken months. And that looked like it cost a hundred thousand dollars maybe.
It probably was eighty to a hundred thousand. Uh, there, but there are, there are a couple. You're, you're on the right track in terms of saying that how, you know, we know what historic data is in terms of usage. And there's something called the ITE manual, which is the Institute of Traffic Engineers manual that basically is the bible of if you're going to build a multifamily, you're going to generate X number of trips per unit. And it goes into detail, like you've got a pet shop, it's going to generate X number of trips. So, and that's updated on a pretty, you know, a regular schedule. So that's, the trips generated by a particular use is one component. The, the other component is where those trips go in the system. So in some areas where the transportation system is pretty well developed out, uh, growth is, you know, pretty moderate. You're not going to really have many effects from where those trips go. In areas like in the south portion of the city, when it goes on to ninety-third or when it goes on to the Tumwater Boulevard, then that triggers a whole number of other things. So you need to think about, do I need a signal there? Do I need to add additional lanes? Do I need to do, so the traffic study is not only looking at sort of the generation of a number for fee for individual trips, but also where those trips are going in the particular system and what improvements may be needed as part of that.
That, that makes sense. That makes sense, man. It's, um, it, it like, it feels like the city does a very good job of, of making sure the development is done appropriately. It also seems like it is quite a lengthy process. I mean, there's so much paperwork back and forth and spend a lot of time reading the documentation, both back and forth and the developers fill out it. And, uh, and I see these developments around here that have been, that have been proposed and permitted and built out, except there's no houses and it goes on for months, years. And I, so I just don't know. I, it feels like there's a disconnect almost, um.
Anyway, there's also a, a larger issue at work here. So the Growth Management Act is really the decision that was made that as development occurs, development pays the cost or a large portion of the cost of what happens. So if, if development comes in and we need a new roadway, that development is going to pay its fair share of its impacts. That wasn't the model necessarily before, you know, development would occur and then people would realize, oh, great. Can't get from A to B anymore. City do something. So it simplified the development process. But it took the burden off of that development that may be creating some of the issues and put it out in the larger community to deal with. And the decision really with growth management is to focus it on the individual development. So that's sort of like the background and that sort of, that's what I think really what creates some of that paperwork, your time to deal with.
Yeah, I, it's, it's not, it's not a critique. It's just an observation.
It's a, but it's a fact. It's, it's something to understand.
Well, the old model was privatize profit and publicize your, your, uh, your, your costs, your, oh, now we have all these headaches. Oh, well, you know, we have, and this guy's long gone. Sorry, I didn't mean to. Great.
I think you make an interesting point, Mr. Schumacher, but, um, and I, and I think maybe some of where you were going is, you know, if we can make that process more efficient, it reduces costs and then the, and then the, the housing goes down.
Sure.
Or the costs of housing can be reduced somewhat.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Just a, just a little point of history, perhaps in the last little while, fifteen years or so, we had kind of a major economic disruption in two thousand eight and nine and so on. It's taken a while to recover. And then we kind of had a major societal disruption with the pandemic. So, so I think some of what we're seeing with some of the slowness of, I know the big development behind my house has got interrupted with the, with the, um, recession and lost their financing and so on. And then it's been, you know, so there's been some other things that are bigger than just the city that have occurred, I think.
No, like you said, it's, it's not a critique. It's, it's just a, um, you know, I, I realize there are material shortages and there are labor shortages and there's all kinds of issues. I, I'm not, not trying to criticize the, the city at all. Um, just trying to take it all in and, and get a, a better understanding, you know, that's really, um, I mean, the, the end goal is that we do need to be, you know, building housing. I mean, you can't continue to grow. You know, I'm forty-nine years old. This, this north, western Washington's been on an economic tear overall since I was born. You know, a lot of counties have been, have missed out, but certainly not Thurston County or Pierce or King or Stahomage and, um, or Kita. And, um, you know, they just, we have not overall kept up and, uh, we need to do whatever we can to fix that problem anyway.
Yeah, this is a good point. I thought I saw another hand raised over here. Okay, sorry. Good, good points. Keep going, Brad.
So back to the Housing Action Plan. So as a result of all that work, um, we were able to develop an individual draft of the Housing Action Plan together, uh, through working with the other jurisdictions. Those individual plans then were taken by the jurisdictions and tweaked a little bit, uh, to reflect, you know, the, the current jurisdictions, you know, issues. So we have some issues that are half the same as Olympia's, uh, so our Housing Action Plan reflected that. But each of the, the Housing Action Plans really identified seven different housing gaps, uh, that needed to be addressed by the plan. Obviously, number one is affordability, um, and reducing host of housing costs for low income and cost burden households. And that cost burden household threshold was getting higher and higher. Um, increasing supply, obviously we've been talking about that, increasing the variety, as we've mentioned. And it's not just individual, uh, family houses or, or garden apartments, dealing with the, the growing and aging senior population. There's other needs and other things that we need to be thinking about that don't apply necessarily to housing overall, but that apply to seniors. Um, it always makes sense to keep up what you have rather than build something new. It's cheaper, it's more efficient, um, and all that. So focusing on that, focusing on keeping neighborhoods stable. So we don't run into issues where people are not able to keep their houses up and so forth. Um, we don't have the issues that some of the declining cities back east have had, which is a whole different ballgame. Just be very glad. I was in Camden. They, we were talking about the issues facing, things have improved dramatically in the past ten years there. They are still in the process of, they have ten, they have seven hundred permits in place this year to tear down existing houses. Have gone so far that they're just not, no longer even close to being rehabable or unhav- unhav- unhavable. They have, and the question was follow-up was, well, how many have you, how many permits have you issued to rehab existing units? Well, that's about five hundred. You're still, you're losing two hundred housing units overall from existing stock. We don't have that, but we don't want to go to that route because that's a whole different issue. Uh, supportive housing, again, providing for those who don't have the income or supports to provide housing for themselves right now. So to address those gaps, we have six different housing strategies. So number one was increasing supply of permanent income restricted affordable housing. That gets at a large portion of the housing market that isn't necessarily served by the private market. Make it easier for households to access housing and stay housed. Uh, that could be renter assistance programs, that could be mortgage assistance programs, that could be just education, that could be a whole range of things. Uh, expanding the overall housing supply, again, getting at, you know, the issue that Brian has raised, uh, how can we make it easier for people to build so we can meet up the obvious demand? Facing variety of housing choices. And then finally is really sort of how do we coordinate and keep coordinating between the jurisdictions? Because it makes a lot more sense for us as a smaller jurisdiction to work with others than it is to reinvent the wheel. And then finally, looking to establish a permanent source of low income housing funding. And that is a component of the home fund, which the City of Olympia had a program that was approved, remember two thousand seventeen, eighteen? Uh, the county approved the countywide program last year. So now there is a dedicated county fund, uh, coming in that can be used for affordable housing in addition to be, so that's important. It doesn't take care of all the housing needs, but it provides an important source of funding that can be used to match other funding sources. If you ever do affordable housing, you'll notice that there are about twenty-five different sources of income. They're all combined into one project and you got, you're doing matches to prove, you know, local match to get something else. And you're going to use that to leverage this and this to that. That's how the affording, uh, the funding for lottery projects occurs. So having a local source to give that push is really important. It doesn't take care of everything. It's important. Um, under those six strategies, we have fifty different actions for the city that, that is implemented. And that's everything, that's a range of things, uh, from on the land use and zoning side to the education side, to the funding side, all that. The cool thing is we have implemented thirty-one additional actions to, before that in the previous year. So we've sort of had done a lot of the stuff ahead of time. Um, again, it's like, let's see how many different things we can do and hopefully they'll work approach. One important component of the Housing Action Plan was identifying that we can't do this on a, even on a regional level. We don't have the funding to do this. We really have to look to state and federal sources to help us deal with housing gaps, the needs, uh, equity issues and so forth. Um, and then as we mentioned, not only the construction, but also the ongoing services. So there is a number of strategies that are part of the larger legislative agenda that the council is working on together with other jurisdictions to definitely address that. You've, you've seen some of these things that are moving through the state legislature. Not everything that was on the governor's wish list for housing has gone through, which is very disappointing in some ways. Uh, but where we can, we're, we're really pushing to see, you know, we got to figure out another way of dealing with this by just leaving it on the local jurisdictions. Any questions about the Housing Action Plan or any of the other things to take? I apologize if we're sort of doing scattershot, but you know, I guess this is sort of the theme of, of this. Multi-family tax exemption program is a really important, uh, component, actually it was an early component of what we could do to, uh, encourage more housing to be built for a number of reasons. Uh, the multi-family tax exemption program exempts property taxes on improvement made for multifamily development in designated areas of the city. Uh, those exemptions could either be for eight years or they could be for twelve years. The twelve-year component has a required twenty percent units have to be affordable. A couple important issues. Number one, we in the city have designated four different areas for multi-family tax exemption. Uh, Capitol Boulevard and the Brewery District were the first two that came on. The focus there, and I'll probably have to jump to the next slide. In two thousand seventeen, um, we adopted the multi-family tax exemption program in the city to begin with. So I mean, a new chapter in, in Title Three to deal with that. We identified specific target areas for the program. And those target areas are the Brewery District Plan area and the Capitol Corridor Plan area. Now, the reason we did that is in each of those plans were identified actions to take to achieve the level and the type of development those plans wanted to see. So in the Brewery District, we wanted to see a level of redevelopment. We wanted to see more commercial activity. We want to see more office activity. We want to see more residential. Same thing with the Capitol Corridor. To achieve those things, we needed to, we, the plans identified, there need to be some level of incentives to add additional housing in those areas. In the housing there wasn't, uh, the case of add housing for affordability. It was a case of add housing to provide the bodies to support the commercial activity, the office activity, all those other, to, to sort of spark the interest in those areas. So, you know, you, you have a built-in base. It was an economic development tool. It wasn't a tool for affordability. Two thousand nineteen, if you remember two thousand eighteen, we, the council went through the process of resolving average street goals for affordable housing and so forth. The goals for the multi-family tax exemption program had changed. We, as part of that process, we were looking at expanding where those things could be located in the city. But we only wanted to expand it to, in, for the twelve-year tax exemption to make sure that we have some level of affordability in those kind of projects. So it expanded into the Little Rock Corridor, which is the area from Trosper south to Tumwater Boulevard on the, uh, east side of Little Rock and the town center, which is this area between, uh, Israel and Tumwater Boulevard. So we limited it to just the one that required a somewhat of affordability. To date, we've, through the program, we, we have about four hundred and forty-one units that have received at least conditional approval. Uh, what conditional approval means is they have a complete and full building application in with the city. Uh, they are, with a conditional approval, they have three years to complete construction of the project. So we have two projects, uh, in the Brewery District that are just were approved late last year. It should be starting or are under construction. One is on North Street. One is on Capitol Boulevard. Uh, we have another one that just was approved in February, March of this year that is being built over on, near Little Rock and Tahiti. And then we have one project that has received final approval, meaning they have condition, uh, they have a certificate of occupancy, meaning they can start renting the units. That was just completed in November.
When is that one? Where, where is that one?
That one is also, uh, you know where the Toyota dealership is? The, the new one, that is, that's the Rockwell Place. There are three different buildings, three different, uh, multi-family tax exemptions as part of that. That is by far the biggest one so far. The new one that, that received conditional approval, I believe, is just, uh, in front of it next to Tahiti. And I think we've been, we haven't got an application yet, but I think we're getting a third one that might be in that area coming. So.
Mr. Tobias.
Of the ones you just mentioned that have been approved, are those in multi-family medium or multi-family high zones for the most part?
I, I don't rec, I apologize. I don't recall. I believe they're probably, they're, they're probably actually in general commercial. Need to double check. I don't know the, the answer. We, where we have, uh, uh, multi-family highs fairly limited. And I think they're above the density for multi-family medium. So that's why I'm hesitant.
But you see, you can build multi-family housing in general commercial zone? Okay.
We, uh, our zoning, I get for, you know, we, we don't call it mixed use, but we have a lot of provisions to basically allow for residential use to develop in our commercial areas, um, whether it's mixed use itself or, uh, various components of the commercial, neighborhood, commercial or general, commercial and so forth.
So do you think that could be a strategy that developers might use to, if you want to incentivize development of more affordable housing units, then they could possibly offset the cost by having, uh, like commercial properties, like the, they. the cost by having, like, commercial properties, like, that they, that rent can basically subsidize the cost of? Okay, I didn't know if that was part of the.
Yeah, we, we have explored that, but what we've heard from the development community and what we've seen from the lack of development at times, is that where we have areas that require a component of true mixed use, meaning residential and commercial, in the same project or same building, we're not seeing that. We, we have a couple of projects that actually have come in very recently that deal with that, but it's been a rare one. It's usually been a straight, either commercial or a straight residential. We definitely want to see the mix, if possible, but we're just not seeing the market respond to that.
For an example of that, you could look at, what is it, 123 Fourth? So, they're, you know, they're mixed-use property, but the first floor that is commercial use, they've had trouble, like, letting, renting out the, the street-side facing ones. And the, for the longest time, at least from when they first developed, there was a ramen shop on the corner property, that was Kazuki, then became Inaka, which was like a, a local non-chain, which just recently closed, so now it's.
Just lost my only ramen place in town?
New prop, new restaurant coming in.
Oh, there is another one?
I lost my ramen spot.
Incredible.
Okay, I didn't know, I, I didn't know about that, I.
Well, you lost it in January, Brad, and you haven't been paying attention.
I brought a copy of, like, $10 for a case that big.
No, we're packing around.
Oh, I, that's mixed use over in Kingswood.
No, but actually, what you just described is a very common issue, and, and back in the 90s, Seattle had mandated in their commercial zones along bigger commercial, you know, streets and so forth, that you have first-floor commercial with a residential development. They had, unless you were downtown or in a really hot spot like a Capitol Hill or First Hill or, you know, whatever, those were not developing. They weren't renting, they weren't happening. And so you had a lot of bizarre things, like, some were sort of turned into office spaces or other, you know, things. So it wasn't achieving what the intent was. But, and I don't know the magic way to do that. You definitely have some stronger commercial space with courtesy of the internet, with the exception of restaurants, you're losing or at loss. So, I, I don't know the magic solution, besides now I'm just bitter and upset about the ramen place.
A new one in Japanese-French fusion.
Oh, boy.
In the Inaka ramen, ramen business, there's a new one coming.
Oh, okay, okay, I can live.
Downtown, right downtown.
Yes.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
You've gone through all the discussion, which hasn't mentioned transportation. Just, and the reason that it works in the areas that you've selected, that's where the two bus routes are, the one and a half bus routes that Tomwater has, the buses go through. So, it seemed like, you know, if we increase the number of bus routes in Tomwater, which These developers would come because they, they'd know that they could rent these apartments because there was transportation available.
No, you're, I think in terms of our rental rates and so forth, even if they're not necessarily not easily accessible on transit, they're renting. Again, it's because we're so automobile-dependent, that you need to have an automobile, not only to, you know, to live, but also to get to wherever you work. There's, and that's the important issue with dealing with, with transit, is we don't have the, the same kind of structure where you worked outside and went downtown on the, to work every day. It's work everywhere. So it's much harder to serve on a transit route, and that, you know, becomes much of a, you know, excuse. But you're, you're, and when we talk about, like, the multi-family tax exemption program and affordability things and everything else, we really try to focus on those areas that do have the transit service. And, as you, we know, because we've had repeated discussions with IT over the years, intercity transit, that we need the density, we need the people, and then transit comes, not the other way, unfortunately. So, you know, we're, we're in discussions, obviously, identifying areas that are definitely booming, Little Rock, Old Highway 99, south of Tomwater Boulevard and so forth, and where we can, if we can expand those even better.
Kind of in that vein, I'm wondering, aside from residential tax, multi-family tax exemptions, is there something sort of similar or equivalent that would be available or could be, could be devised for other types of development to get at that more mixed use, so that you're incentivizing that density, you're incentivizing, that, you know, you're giving them some reason to contribute toward affordability?
I think that's, that's definitely something I know we're exploring on the economic development side, and Austin Ramirez, our new economic development manager, is definitely sort of focused on that. I'm thinking, recent projects like the Craft District Development, that's definitely something the city has provided support to get off the ground, because we wanted to see redevelopment and commercial activity and everything else as sort of a starter for more, that we didn't have to support directly, and so forth. So we, we definitely look for those kinds of opportunities. I think the, all, we may have Austin come in at some point during the comp plan update to talk a little bit about the, the economic development plan and the upcoming.
That would be really cool. I, you know, it would be really cool if you, if, you know, some commercial interest found that it was in their interest to have their employees be, have easy access to their jobs, you know, because they lived so close, they didn't have to get in a car, they lived close by, or there was some sort of decent transit.
Or I would, I mean, we've, we've talked about this, but we haven't really seen the level of demand for, as we live workspaces, where you have, you know, where, what you do is immediately next to or close to where you live, maybe in part the same. It would, it would be nice if we had more of it at hand for that kind of stuff, we could talk about how else we could try and encourage. So, the multi-family tax exemption program is, is good, but it's not the silver bullet, because those affordability things go away after the 12 years. It's also, you don't get a really big bang in terms of the affordability versus some other programs that I've talked about. If we're in New Jersey, for example, where the state has mandated that every multi-family development, new multi-family development that occurs, provide a 15% or more of those units be inclusive, meaning that they are affordable to be under 80%, period. There's no discussion, there's no incentive, it's just do it. They also provide a lot of money on the state level to those local jurisdictions. But we don't have those kinds of things in Washington, so we kind of have a make-do thing. The multi-family tax exemption program has been altered a little bit on the state level the past couple of years. They've increased the incentives, they've increased the length of the multi-family tax exemption, all that. There is actually a deadline in, in the code, that's an ex, it's an expiration date. In 2016, 26, it goes away unless the council takes action. Council's going to take up discussion of this in June, the general development committee has asked us to look at the multi-family tax exemption program, what we can do better, change, tweak, whatever, isn't working, either doing what we think we want it to do. So that will probably change, in the future. I'll briefly go through these, but these are, the funding commission touched on a lot of these things. You'll see some, some things that you didn't touch on that are outside of the quote-unquote development code, sections of our municipal code, titles 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. But this is what, sort of like the heart of what the funding commission worked on. There was a number of small amendments made throughout the zoning code, otherwise to deal with housing affordability, building more housing. Number one, there were incentives built in for affordable housing, permanently affordable housing units. This is in addition to the multi-family tax exemption program. So, for example, in the multi-family high and multi-family medium districts, there was a density bonus. If you wanted, if you won the density bonus, you had to provide a certain percentage of those units as permanently afforded. In the commercial districts that we allow residential, because we don't have a maximum density, you can fill as much as you want, we included things like height increases as a bonus. We haven't had anybody take us up on. And we're, we definitely were trying to figure out ways to figure out how do we make it even better to do, so I think we'll be taking that up again after we finish this round of comp plan updates. We made some tweaks to our senior housing facility, housing, getting rid of some requirements, redundant review processes like conditional use permits and those kinds of things for kinds of uses. We increased the kinds of dwelling definitions we have to give us a little more flexibility of what can we allow in particular zone. We expanded duplexes to every zone in the city, which was a big change. We actually have, starting to see some of that. It's a slow incremental change over time, but it is, again, we're just trying to build. We expanded where townhouses and rowhouses go. Townhouses and rowhouses that are defined in our zoning code is those, essentially it's a single-family house that shares a common wall. It's different from a duplex, which could be under the same ownership and run one half rented out or both rented out. We reduced where single-family detached dwelling units are located, can be located in our, in our zones. Expanded again, where housing could be allowed, we added cottage housing in 2016 and 17, but it's a good concept, again, we haven't had anybody bite them. We reduced minimum lot sizes in our zones. We made some changes to our off-street parking. Commissioner Kirkpatrick has raised the issue that he really wants us to get rid of parking requirements throughout the city, and we're going to take him up on his offer, given what the City of Olympia is experiencing right now. We're not doing that. No, well, we don't have the, the transportation system to support that. People are going to need a car until definite future. But, in areas that are, have close and easy access to transit, we did include some tweaks to our parking requirements to reduce the minimum parking requirement. So for example, in our manufactured home parks, we, you don't need two parking stalls, you can just have one. If you're within a half mile by walkable path or sidewalk of transit, you have a reduced number. Now, developers may still build out to what they think they're going to need, but we reduce what they have to provide. So that was a whole gamut of things. We, we intentionally did not call it missing middle because Olympia got challenged on that title, but we did essentially what Olympia did, but we didn't call it. We also looked at our housing.
Mr. Schumacher.
Well, I was just going to ask, have you thought about making a version of this document public on the website?
Uh, yes, and as soon as Erica has time, she'll finish that.
The other half that are, that are the team, the department.
The one who actually gets the things done in that part.
Oh, it just seems like a, you know, a, a nice consolidated document that developers think, you know, what do we do to make it easier to do business with the city?
No, I think, thank you, and that's actually a very important thing that we do want to publicize more.
Yeah.
We just haven't gotten to.
Mr. Varela.
Good question, we haven't touched on it very much. Is there any discussion on tiny homes, or is that factored into the planning?
It, it actually, as part of the housing text amendments for 80, we had had a minimum square footage, that was taken out, and we relied just on the building code, minimum requirements for living, you know, based on living with a unit, try to capture the tiny home thing. The issue with tiny homes is the, they're sort of like the broader market definition of what a tiny home is, and then the building code definition of what a tiny home is. We've been struggling with how to deal with that, because the, you know, the building code has very specific requirements, and if you follow those, or, you know, or if you get a unit through LNI, similar to a manufactured home or something like that, then we're good. But there are some tiny homes on the market that just don't make those level. Our building officials sent around an article from the state building code officials about containers being reused as commercial and/or residential, and what you need to do to make sure that, you know, to, you know, meet code and everything to do. So there, there's definitely a movement to try to figure out how to do it, it's just to make sure that if we do it, it's a safe, healthy alternative, just not.
My, my question was less about the additional dwelling units, where the individual has it in their backyard, on the side of the home, but it's more a focused effort for Tomwater, potentially to dedicate an area utilizing a standard type of tiny home to provide that affordable housing with shared amenities within it. I don't know if that was a decision, was it even feasible?
Kind of like a cottage court type.
That's where I think we're.
Very similar.
Yeah, what we're trying to get, I think that's what the cottage housing ordinance was trying to get at, that the cottage housing is basically on a single parcel, that you may have ownership of, say, the, the pad where you live, but your parking is shared, your own, you know, so we sort of have that in the code right now, but we haven't had anybody even, that I'm aware of, really bite up, saying, I've come in with a serious proposal for that. But it would be, I like that proposal because, you know, it, it simplifies things for people wanting a smaller home, but still having, you know, an outdoor space or things like that.
Great.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
When I think of tiny homes, though, what I think of is a development where you have common showers and common heat areas, and, and our code for Tomwater does not permit that, that they're required to have a bathroom within the AD, they're required to have a kitchen, even though it may be miniscule. So really, my thought of tiny homes are, is communal living, and I don't think that's taken in Tomwater code.
No, and, and a good example of what you're talking about is the Plum Street Village in Olympia, which is, you know, individual units that are built, but may not, they have some other issues I'll talk about, but, but, you know, you have a, that's actually the bedroom, and then you have a shared communal bathroom and a shared communal kitchen as part of that development. We started, we haven't revised our, I don't know how, basically our homeless encampment code. We have a, you know, we have a very rigid code about establishing that kind of thing in Tomwater that we haven't updated since, I think, the early 2000s. But that would be what we would want to do if we wanted to go back. Additional changes to fees, this is another way, obviously, that we've heard from the development community and others, that how do we reduce the cost of building is to reduce the fee that we charge. We charge three large, well, three groups of fees. Number one, impact fees, like we talked about for parks and recreation, on parks and transportation, and for schools. We also charge connection fees, which are a really big cost, for water and sewer, is the cost of adding those units to our systems and the improvements that are needed to do. And our permit fees, say, building review fees and, plan review fees and things like, which is a much smaller component. We did a number of fee amendments a couple of years ago that are, that are still part of our fee ordinance. Now, our fee ordinance is adopted by the council every year, and includes everything we charge, from the, you know, the cost of a copy of something at the front counter, to building permits, to everything else, is all in that fee. So, we, we tied a lot of these fee amendments into providing permanently affordable housing. We've had some people approach us on this, but not enough to get us, you know, like, we're doing it, it's, it's working. We still have a lot of, of things to do. So we've offered discounts based on, going back to, you know, a location near transit, near parks, and, you know, you can get reductions for things like this, if you also provide a low-income housing. We've also included some transportation impact fee reductions for smaller-sized units, 1200 and under, as well as water connection and building review fees. Now, sewer fees are tied in with LOT, which runs the regional sewer system. They have just started a program that does a lot of this. I'm still working. I'm still working with our permit folks to figure out where we are in working through that. I think we've got, definitely have support to do it. I just don't know how it's working yet. We definitely have some developments that are taking advantage of both the water and the sewer connection fee. Last really big topic I want to cover tonight is rental housing. This is the, another, probably the, another one that was identified, you know, in the council that they really wanted us to focus on, tenant protections and rental housing. And it took us a while to get through these ordinances and get them in the books. We had a lot of discussions on the regional level, can we, did it make, it made more sense for us to have one set of rules across the jurisdictions than multiple rules across, but we didn't get to that point. First of all, we're doing all this work, the state is updating and changing the Resident Tenant Landlord Act on a yearly basis, so thankfully the state accomplished a lot of the goals that we wanted to do already, so that checked our boxes. But really, our charge was to look at ways to make sure people can stay housed, don't have, you know, if we eliminate that source of problem, people having to go into homelessness because they can't stay in the units they have, you know, that's, that's part of the problem. And so as part of that, three different components in 2022 that we, we've been able to accomplish. Number one, we had a couple of ordinances to, number one, update our tenant protection code sections in Title V. Again, those were outside of the development post-up that the planning commission saw it, so this went directly to the council. The important thing about the first set of changes is one ordinance dealt with all the protected classes in terms of rentals. So that's everything from race, sex, gender identity, and when, there's a long list of things that are attached to that. So that's one part of that. The second part is, we also expanded the noticing requirements. Because we can't in the state do rental subsidy, we can't control rents on the local or state level, it's not allowed. What we can do is we can make sure people have sufficient notice of rent increases, sufficient notice that, you know, they're, they're going to be asked to leave and all those kinds of things, so they have sufficient time to find additional housing outside or make arrangements to pay for the additional debt. So that's an important component of what we've, we've done there. We've also, and this has just started, because this ordinance was approved in December, but it became effective actually on, on Sunday, or was it Saturday? We have a requirement in there that the, all landlords in the city, again, that's for all properties that are rented, provide information to tenants on what their rights and responsibilities are. So that is a summary of what our requirements are, a summary of what is in the state law and also that. And then finally, we wanted to expand what we did with the dispute resolution center. And specifically, we wanted to focus on services provided to residents of Tumwater, whether they be property owners who live in Tumwater or renters who live in Tumwater, as a way to keep issues out of the court system, and because of the timing, the cost, and all those things. So we wanted to make sure that we had a system in place to allow us to deal with it. So we got the contract finished and signed and done in March, and we're already starting to use it, good and bad, I guess. But there are definitely a number of issues that, you know, that people just need to talk, and sometimes they kind of need to be forced to talk, and this is a way to, to get at that, getting into the court system and creating other issues. Other work, Megan, thank you, together has been a huge component of all this. You know, I just can't wait to find out what our new city administrator is going to do. I'll, they're probably, I'm going to encourage them to talk with you first, so. Working with the school district, guess what? The easiest way to get at most of the people, the easiest way to get the largest group of people in the city is to go through the school district. And that's also very important, if identifying issues for families that may be close to having issues with homelessness or other things that may contribute to homelessness, that's also a huge hint to, to figure out and to get services. We really have also been trying to talk with our faith community about other things that we could be doing, what we could do to support those groups that are in the community already, already doing things. So that's an ongoing thing. We're also, we, we have a required, well, we don't, we don't have a requirement, but we do homelessness account as part of the county process every year. We volunteer and provide people for that. Things from before COVID to COVID to post-COVID, the counts have been unique. They haven't been able, we haven't been able to do it as well as we'd like to. But we need to know the numbers in order to figure out what this, you know, what level the problem is and where it is and all those kinds of things. Spoke a little bit about accessory dwelling units. We have been, done a number of things related to accessory dwelling units to encourage them in the city, because again, it allows, you know, for multiple good reasons. You're adding units in developed neighborhoods, and you can do it on a, you know, less intrusive basis than, you know, tearing down a hundred acres and building up housing. We worked with Lacey and Olympia to develop a pre-approved set of plans, five, four different sets of plans for accessory dwelling units. So if somebody wants to do a unit, they can come into the city, meet with us. It is a plan that's already received building approval. That in itself is a good thing. We're actually seeing a uptick in the number of these that we're seeing in the city, both non-existing lots, but also in new subdivisions, which is, which is cool, but new, meaning that you're building a subdivision with an existing, with a new single family house as well as either a detached or an unattached ADU on the same lot as part of the development. Manufactured home parks, mobile home parks, this is by, well, not by far, but it's a huge component of our affordable housing stock right now in the city, about 800 to 900 units are of this category. We have an existing manufactured home park zone, which basically helps us keep existing mobile home parks that, so they don't convert and we lose that supply. However, that doesn't address the, the underlying issue of rising rents of, you know, you may own the house, but you don't own where your, your, your unit sits.
Any effort to address the challenge of qualifying for those, those parks? One of the friction points tends to be that you need X number of months of inventory proof of, or income to qualify to even apply for that. And sometimes that's almost more than a down payment for a home with other programs available. So you, you're kind of at a position where you're not able to even afford those situations.
You've touched on other issues, and we don't see new manufactured home parks. So the ones, so obviously increasing population, we still have that component that wants to or has to live in those kinds of things, but they don't have the ability, limited number of lots. I'm just thinking of how, how it's working in some of the parks that I have, no people live in in Olympia where, yeah, you could, you could move in, but you went from a single wide to a double wide because that's was the new thing. Guess what? No, no, it's hard to afford a full level wide sometimes.
And the financing piece.
And the financing piece and all the.
I forgot to include this in the commissioner's reports, but I saw a new story recently of a cooperative up in Lakewood, I think it was the Bob's in Jamestown Homeowners Cooperative in Lakewood, Washington. They recently bought a mobile home park that organized as a community to buy their own community, their own, basically homeowner's community. I don't know what the status is of our current mobile home park section in Tumwater, of who the current ownership is or if it's cooperatively owned or not, but that is definitely an option. The, the trade-off there is, of course, you need a lot of financing upfront, which can be, you know, obviously a hurdle for people, especially that are already, you know, a hundred, $150 a month extra in rental income could, you know, displace them from housing. So, you know, that is like, but it, that is definitely an option that can be done if, you know, if you can coordinate and get enough financing upfront to make those areas cooperative rather than subject to the whims of the, the market.
Thank you. That's another important thing that was identified in 2018 by the council, the thing that we needed to pursue. We have one, I believe we have one manufactured home park in, in the city that has that kind of model. We, we definitely had lots of discussions with local land trusts about what we can do to pursue that and the conditions. I know they had reached out to talk with individual park owners. We didn't get a lot of traction on that, but that's always something we're thinking about. Land trusts for a variety of reasons seem to be a good model, whether it's a manufactured home park or something, you know, keep control of the cost of.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Well, I noticed that Tumwater is in some way permitting RV parks as well. There's at least one on Henderson, an acre of property with about eight RVs each in their stall lined up, and of course, the owner is providing electricity, they're providing sanitary, all, all the things that, I don't see it anywhere in the code, but those, those seem to be okay.
Yeah. I, I can't speak to that particular development. Our current code allows the use of RVs within an existing manufactured home park, provided that they can attach.
This is light industrial.
Yeah, that's probably not a permitted. The concern, the concern is the RV is really.
I'd rather see them there than parked next to the hospital.
Yeah.
On Eastern Road, yeah.
The, the issue for, is just that the RV units themselves really aren't built for 365 living, and they, you know, they will break down and everything else over time. So it's not something we, we've had discussions, what do we do about this, and do we want to have RV parks officially or not? And we, we really come down and said, no. We will allow individual RV units to connect, be in, in existing manufactured home park if they can connect to water sewer on a permanent basis. And that's really a very important thing, is running a water line or a water hose over the ground and et cetera is not a recipe for a good living experience in the winter, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, that's not what we really want to explore.
There's a large one right at you, just before we get to Nisqually, Title V.
Well, that, you know, yeah.
Right, is it, is a rather large RV park.
There's a, there's a camp.
Those RVs haven't moved in 20 years.
Yeah, and they're, okay, thank you. That, that's, there's a couple of things. There's the informal parks, then there's the approved campground, like the one in Nisqually, like the one south of 93rd in, in the city. They, provided that there are no health issues, we've been letting those go, and I don't think we've really been, because we recognize that, obviously, there's a need.
It fills a need, you know, yeah.
But if there's no health issues, if there's no safety issues, we've been letting, we haven't, I, I don't know if we've really have taken an active role of enforcing if there's a time period they can be there or anything like that. And we've also, we have pretty good relations with the campground owners, and so that means that they're taking an active eye on what's happening, and if they're maintaining that, making sure there are no issues, we're letting that occur. But yeah, I, I know what you're talking about, because I remember when we moved down here permanently in 2005, that the one in Nisqually would occasionally have open spaces, and I haven't seen an open space in there for a long time. So this brings us quickly to the comprehensive plan up. All of the things that we've been doing, I guess are going to be, we're going to, this is all background to let you know that the state is now mandating us that we not only be able to take in a certain number of people over the 20-year horizon of the plan, but also that we're providing housing for specific income groups and how we're doing that. We are in the process right now of getting the statewide projections. They come down from Commerce and Office of Financial Management to the counties. The counties work under the, what's known as the city, the countywide planning policies to allocate population and housing, and so we are now in the process of working with the other jurisdictions on that. We're looking probably to get First and Regional Planning Council hired to help us with that process, because they have helped us in the past with the population allocation process. They helped us with the housing action plan. It makes sense for them to help us with this. We expect to have those numbers, the actual numbers we'll need in Tumwater probably by September of this year. And then we get to decide how we're going to accommodate this. My, I, I just want to bring up the, the issue, the state requirement is, we're given a number, and we have to somehow demonstrate in the plan that we're going to be able to accommodate. I could do a paper exercise to accommodate almost anything, but we need to actually go beyond that, I think, and talk about specific actions, you know, either identifying funding or whatever else we need to do to actually really accomplish what this does, and what, what we're required to do. So I, I expect we're going to have some good discussions about how we're going to actually Any questions?
Do you think you had a thought on how to do that by watching Dr. Givago?
Brad, I know we're, we don't have all that much time, but I'm wondering if, if you could give us just a quick, quick idea of when we're going to take this up again next? Is it part of the comp plan and all that, or?
Number one, it will be part of the comp plan, but number two, and this is where we get to the all exciting, what, what Eric has been working on part of the session, we're going to be bringing an ordinance next month for updates to the SEPA process. The threshold, the SEPA environmental review process has been around since 1971. It was the first and hottest tool for addressing environmental impacts for new development and projects. The state has been allowing jurisdictions to raise the threshold before a SEPA review is required, provided we can demonstrate that we cover issues SEPA would cover elsewhere in our code. There have been so many changes and updates to our codes since SEPA was established that for the most part, almost everything is now covered elsewhere in the code. So the GMA, the transportation stuff has dealt with, there, critical areas deals with these other issues, all those kinds of things. And so we'll be bringing a proposal to the commission to talk about, about what we, what the proposed levels could be going forward. We had, we had done this originally in 2017 and 2019? We did a further tweak to it because the state law allowed us to it, and we're, this is even more, so we're going to do it again. So that's important because it's one less process that someone has to go through to get approval. It takes time, it takes money, and if we can get rid of that for a particular thing, then we're in favor of doing it. The flip side is, we want to make sure that, and, and for a lot of people, SEPA is used as a way to know what projects are coming, what the, you know, and so forth. So we're trying to also make sure that our notice of applications are broad enough that people still get the notification that something is coming, but they don't need SEPA to let them know that. Do you have any other, did you want to add to that?
No, but it will be one of our.
No, but it will be, one of our concerns is about the traffic analysis.
Yeah.
And the, the CIPA traffic mitigation fee.
We have, the Tumwater interchange with I-5 is, is one, we're trying to figure out a trigger to deal with that that doesn't require us to go through CIPA.
No.
Once we solve that problem, everything's just.
Plan to action, start it now. All right. Any further comments from people?
I do have one question. Go over here while you were talking about it. A plan to accommodate all income levels, like how is that defined is something I'm curious about because when I hear it, I'm like, what about people that don't have income or on a very, very fixed income? Is it defined by percentages of AMI?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's defined by percentages of AMI, so zero to twenty, zero to, there, there are five levels before you get to the hundred. So the people that have minimal or no income would be, we have to figure out how to deal with housing for those people as well. So it, that's important because, so we're starting at a level that, that the private market's not gonna be able to cover. And it needs to be, this is the highest level of, of public input, our public funding to provide and the lesser as you go up. But we're gonna have to figure out how that's all gonna work. But, cause that's what I mean by, yeah, we can assign a number and say, yeah, we can tweak the zoning to allow that, but is that really gonna do it? Now, it, just saying that we allow it, that doesn't, doesn't magically make it happen. We allow cottage housing, we allow ADUs, we allow that people aren't busting down the door to do it.
I mean, to, to a huge degree, notwithstanding the ton of effort that's already occurred over the years, um, we, we still have to largely await interest from the, the development community. If there were a way though to pick a spot or a couple of spots, uh, to focus on and really, you know, like all hands on deck, all partnerships, you know, and just focus, I'm wondering if that's been considered, you know? And how many, what, you know, kind of the biggest bang for the, for the effort?
Yeah, that, and then that's where I think it, there isn't one thing we could do or one giant effort that will take care of everything. It's when I, it's similar to how I described funding for affordable housing projects coming up.
Right, right.
A bazillion sources. It's, that's kind of the piecework that's required to address a lot of these things. It's not a, just put a huge amount of money into it and you're done with it.
Well, we're just about out of time. Are there other points that people would like to make?
I'd just like to throw out for maybe a discussion there, uh, the presentation that we have this evening. Projects move through planning stage, and then they move to a design stage, and then to an engineering stage, when they actually get built. I think, uh, their presentation, while they were allowed to speak in public and, uh, that was a satisfaction to them, was the whole audience. I don't, I think, uh, that particular project, uh, we're not in a position to go back and address it. People are not even in the rooms that are doing that level of work on that project, the people that are, we've done a preliminary design. Full design, it didn't mount here and unfunded. So it seems to me that, uh, maybe the city doesn't have a process other than the city council to listen to this, but I'm not sure that they accomplished it and talked to us about it, you know?
We had some, I, I basically, now, when I got back on Monday, that they were interested in coming to talk. I reached out to them and we had some conversations about what the most appropriate venue is and what, what the planning commission can and can't.
Really do on this one?
They still wanted to come, so I'm not gonna tell them, don't come, because you gotta, you gotta start if you feel that you have.
I think they respond.
It's important that you have the ability to do that. I do think they need to raise these sort of concerns also at the council level because ultimately that is kind of like the more appropriate venue, I think, for that. And then obviously is through the design process and working with staff, just being involved with that. It's difficult, I, I, I didn't, I didn't know where the, what the concerns were coming from to begin with. Um, so I actually found out tonight that it was from our website and a drawing and so forth. So I'm still in the process of figuring out, backtracking, to talk to the people who drew that, that actually, what, what was the purpose of the drawing? Is it still accurate or is it just a representation, you know, that kind of thing? So, yeah, we're, we're still kind of figuring out.
The city awarded a contract, what, three years ago for preliminary design? But, uh, there's no feedback to the planning commission, the outcome, you know, of that. I don't know, uh, other than the fact that somebody made a drawing of it, stuck it up on the city website, uh, whether, uh, otherwise, uh, anybody would have known that, uh, somebody drew a line in a different location than was initially, uh, shown to the public.
Yeah, and, and from the planning commission's perspective, and this is my, my thought is that the planning commission's role is, is really the, the policy, the broader stroke thing, you know? We need a connection between these point A to point B and the line is here, but it, it's not the design line, it's not a survey line, it's not a, anything else but this is what we're gonna do somewhere within this area line. And the next step of the process is actually getting to the actual project design conceptual thing, which they started to, but more importantly, the actual design where you get to see, you know, and respond to a, a specific project. And that's a different venue. That's, that's not a planning commission function. You, you sort of establish the broader picture of things. You've, like similar to your comp plan, your policies are there, your development regulations establish what you want in these areas, but the next stage is somebody coming across the counter with an application for something. And that's done through several.
Preliminary design.
Yeah.
And bring the public back in to it. They were, they were addressed before it was done.
Right. And that's why I've been wanting to talk to our transportation manager to find out where they are in that particular process because, you know, that's, that's really what their responsibilities are, is making sure that the public is aware of what they're proposing to. It's like the design process that occurred for the prosper interchange and all of that that's currently underway, you know, after they're under construction, before they run their construction and all that. So I'm, I don't know where they are in that process for this.
But then we see the transportation plan again, the one that we had expires in twenty twenty five.
It will be part of the comp plan update.
Taking a, a look at the time, um, do we need to spend more time on this issue tonight? Need to then, okay. It does sound like though, uh, we might wanna entertain as a matter of policy from, for the planning commission, um, other public involvement opportunities that are available to people after, after planning commission as stuff moves through whatever it's doing. And encourage more, more of that outreach, is that fair?
I, I think that's also really our role as staff is to make sure that if we get a comment and we, we make sure we direct it to the appropriate venues.
I have one more thought about this issue. As I was also trying to figure out where did this come from? I see, um, references to the brewery district plan and when I see on the website, there is a page for the city Tumwater East Street extension. And I think one thing that might have been confusing for the stakeholders is at some point in this printed email chain, Mary Heather says, I don't think you need to come to the city council to talk to them about it right now.
I saw that and I don't necessarily understand where she was coming from with that. And that's, I don't, you know, Mary Heather is somebody I would trust to say what, you know, the appropriate thing you need. If you have a comment, you do something, so, um, we need to talk with her, what her thoughts were behind that. In my mind, it's, if you have a concern, you know, and you don't think staff is responding or if there's something bigger, you always have the options to that. I don't know necessarily, cause I haven't talked to Mary Heather about it.
I found that on the website.
Yeah.
And it links to a video that's two years old. That video that's embedded is two years ago published by the city. I don't know, I have it on, yeah.
Came out of the preliminary design. I was interested in the preliminary design because of the problems with, um, taking all the traffic, um, where the parking is for, uh, the restaurant, which hasn't reopened so, uh, but, uh, I was trying to see what, uh.
Yep.
Preliminary design did with that street and did nothing, that they didn't even bother to look at. So I didn't, I didn't even notice it changed. They drove, cause I was looking at the other side of the project.
There may be a gap. Yes. That was Commissioner Varela and seconded by Vice Chair. Thank you very much. Commissioner Javai.
On the order before we adjourn, uh, when is our next meeting?
Our, thank you, we have finished our agenda. April twenty-fifth, our next meeting.
Yeah.
Good deal, thank you.
I will have on the order just past nine o'clock and we should have had a discussion whether to extend meetings.
We should have, we should have done. I'm flapping, I'm patting my wrist on that. All right, but we have a, we, we have a motion and a second to adjourn our meeting tonight. Any discussions? All in favor of a adjourning? Please say aye. Great, thank you, everybody. Good, rich discussion.
That was really a help, Brad, thank you. Pulling that all together. And I, Brian, your suggestion of having.